I have to go save the city and he said.
A little immature for driver's license at that point. So she just says, I don't think I'm ready. I need another year. I say, great. Glad I didn't have to tell you. Yeah. A lot of kids are opting not to get their driver's license anymore. You have to almost say, you know, you're gonna, you have to get your driver's license. I'm tired of driving you around. So.
Kids aren't getting driver's?
No, most of them, they don't want driver's license. They don't want the responsibility. So.
Wow.
I know. It's different for, I know. It's a different generation. Yeah. They also don't want to get married because that would be a commitment too. We're just gonna live with someone too. Just see how it goes.
Good evening. I will call the regular planning commission meeting of Thursday, February 1st to order and we will start with the pledge. And roll call please.
Okay. Commissioner Tuchinsky?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett? Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Oregi?
Present.
Commissioner Arumlaw? Vice Chair Howlett?
Here.
Chair Scott?
Present. Item 1.3, we have a presentation on a housing legislation update.
Good evening. I'm Marie Demers, Housing Manager for the City of Chico. I'm here tonight. Bruce Ambow and I prepared a brief presentation to give you a summary overview of the recent housing legislation that was passed and that will affect Chico. Let's see. As you've heard and seen, California is experiencing a housing crisis of epic proportions. There's a low supply and rising costs of housing. Approximately a third of renter households pay more than 50% of their income to rent. That's here in our town. The homeownership rate is at its lowest since the 1940s. Numbers of people without permanent shelter are overwhelming, as I think we, all of us are aware of. Funding sources for affordable housing at all levels have either dried up or have been drastically reduced over the last 30 years. This legislation affects planning, land use, and all types of housing. Bruce will take us through the legislation that affects primarily planning and land use issues. And then I'll be back to cover issues regarding the new reporting requirements and some affordable housing information.
Thanks, Marie. Yes, Marie indicated this was a busy year in legislation and housing. There were three general categories of areas of regulation where these, where most of this legislation occurred. I would summarize it with as local accountability, streamlining, which means getting permits in a timely way and processing applications quickly, and then funding sources. There is a lot of uncertainty on how these regulations are going to be implemented. You know, we had 15 housing laws. Signed into law on Jan-, on, at the end of January. So they're effective at the beginning of January, excuse me. So we had 15 different laws. I think that's probably the most we've had in quite some time. So the agency that's charged with implementing and regulating, interpreting these regulations is the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So there's, there's, so there, they'll, for example, today, we received some guidance about, for today, and about implementing SB 35, which, which is a streamlining piece of legislation. And in that notice, it came with an advisory for all these training sessions that local agencies have to go through, just to learn how to apply and fill out the regulations and comply with the laws. So there's a whole period of process of the agencies figuring, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, which we call HCD, figuring out how do these need to be implemented, and then training statewide, and then the reporting program and the evaluation and monitoring. So it's a, it begins a whole process. And that's, the purpose of this is just to give you a heads up because we're starting to roll on this right now. One of the big areas is accessory dwelling units. That's on our agenda later today. The, the big, and I won't get into a lot of detail because that's later on in this agenda, but the main areas of, of change this year that we have to deal with, have to deal with parking, utility fees, and conversion of spaces. That means the conversion of the main residence and other accessory dwellings like a standalone garage or something. So those are the main areas of legislation. But again, most of these changes occurred in 2016, and then we were given until '17 to complete them, and the deadline was at the end of '17. Moving on. The most significant is probably what's called the Housing Accountability Act. It sets a number, it's a pretty low threshold. Any, pretty much any project that has a housing component to it is eligible for the Housing Accountability Act. It sets in a place accelerated timeframes for agencies to review projects, and it creates a new phenomenon called Objective Development Standards, which is a tool that the government, that the state is using to take out the subjectivity that complicates the development review process. And these are pretty much objective development standards that reasonably, in the, the interpretation of objective is still forthcoming from HCD. But we have what we believe is a pretty good set of objective development standards. We went through all of our, of our codes and submittal requirements and are prepared to provide those if folks ask for them. But that's what we need to be prepared for is to identify what those objective development standards are. And furthermore, you can only deny projects based upon those objective development standards. And so there's an accelerated timeframe to review them based upon the objective development standards. And if you don't, if you miss one of these timeframes, then they're deemed complete anyway. They're deemed consistent with the objective development standards. Even if you didn't do the determination, if you don't do it in time, they're gonna, it's, it's by act of legislation deemed complete. Then, so, and it also set in a place additional findings if we wanted to deny an affordable project. So they're making it more difficult under the Accountability Act to deny affordable project, housing projects. And I have to say that I think most of these are directed at cities that deny housing projects, and I don't think we have that kind of reputation. We've been pretty hospitable, but other communities haven't. And that's why the state is taking this kind of drastic action. So the other piece of important legislation is SB 35. That includes another streamlined approval process. This is where HCD makes a determination whether or not the jurisdiction is either providing enough affordable housing units, and we, we have to report annually, every city has to report annually, how they've been doing in terms of providing housing. So HCD determines whether or not you're providing enough or you're not providing enough, or you failed to report for two consecutive years or something like that. So, so, and then if you get into that, then you're, you're presumed to be not in compliance, and there's a number of, of a different series of steps that projects can go through to qualify for this. But at the end of the day, if all, there's a series of things, but if, if they meet all of those, then it really compresses the timeframe and moves the timeframes down. For example, so it, this is still based upon the objective development standards. If you've got projects of less than 150 units, you need to determine, the city needs to determine within 60 days if it's consistent with those objective development standards. And as you folks know, our environmental process a lot of times takes a lot longer than that. So it's, it's pretty challenging to work within these timeframes. So the, the legislation is moving around CEQA in some of these areas. And for larger projects, it extends it to 90 days. But then it sits in a place, it, once you've made the determination that they are complete, then you've got a certain time period when you have to approve them. So that, that extends from either 90 to 150 days, depending upon how many units are, if it's less than 150 or more. So that's another significant piece of legislation that we're prepared to deal with if, if an application is submitted that wants to invoke those, those privileges. And then the last thing I'm going to touch on is the housing reporting requirements. We have a number of different categories that we, we report on right now, that, but now they're reaching down into what's actually submitted. They want to track how projects are moving through the process, what's being submitted, and what's not being approved, or what, how long things are taking in the process. Before it was just, we would just report on, on what was produced in terms of certificates of occupancy product. Now they want to see what's submitted, and we have to report on all of those things that are submitted on the housing front. So they've, we got about 20 other factors that are added to the already pretty lengthy annual housing report that needs to be submitted to HCD. But, you know, on the upside, there is funding available. Marie can go over that in a little bit more detail. But if you have any questions, maybe we could take them at the end.
All right. So yeah, as Bruce mentioned, one of the good things is that there was actually some funding mechanisms put into place, which is great. SB 2 is a permanent source for housing, and what it is, is it's a recording fee that's placed on any kind of documents related to real estate. $75 per document, up to 225 per transaction. Not everything. So, you know, like a first-time home buyer, or even just a home buyer, they're, they're not going to get, their documents aren't going to be subject to that fee. But say you do a reconveyance, or you do a subordination of a loan, or refinance, that kind of thing, then those documents would be subject to the fee. So all of those monies are estimated to generate about 250 million in the state. And then the first year, the local governments will receive 50%, and the state will maintain the other 50%. The 50% that comes to the local government is for some of these planning, the streamlining processes and that kind of thing, that we can utilize those funds for that purpose. The other 50% is going to go toward homelessness solutions, if you will. And that's going to be through HCD. We do not know any of the details of exactly how that's going to be parsed out, or if they're going to utilize existing programs, or create new programs, or what. So that's all kind of pending to be determined. After 2019, then 70% of the funds will actually come to the local government. And then the, HCD, the state will retain the 30%. Okay. The good thing that I did read was that it looks, it appears that it will be available for broad usage at this point. At least that's what's in the legislation. So that's, that's always good. All right. So the next steps are the accessory dwelling, the ADU code amendments, and then obviously that's well underway. You're going to hear a lot more about that later. The Housing Accountability Act, I know that staff is already working on that. We're monitoring sort of the direction of how HCD is going with all of these things. And as Bruce mentioned, at four o'clock today, we got an email with, all of a sudden they put out some FAQs and some additional information. So that's rolling. They're also going to be holding stakeholder meetings so that we can have input onto how, how the funding is utilized and how some of these other processes happen. Okay. And so then we will be, well, I primarily will report back to city council, but I'm sure Bruce will be reporting back to you as things progress and as things come forward. There's a few future items. There's SB 3, which is a Veterans and Affordable Housing Bond. That is due to be put to the voters in the November 18 election. Yeah. So if that one passes, it'll be, there will be $3 billion available to existing programs, affordable housing programs, and another billion for Veterans Home, Veterans Home Purchase Program. Let's see. There's some other things where, again, I'm just going to tell you what they are, but we haven't delved into them at all yet. A lot of these things do definitely pertain to more urban areas. For instance, there's that Workhouse Housing Opportunity Zone, Housing Sustainability Districts, Inclusionary Housing, which, I mean, that could affect us, Neighborhood Infill Finance and Transit Improvement Districts. That's, it's a tax increment tool, most likely, again, more urban area. All right. So as I mentioned, we will be providing additional information as it becomes available and, and we move further along down the process. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Evans?
So I know you don't have all the answers yet. I appreciate that. But, but back to this objective standards. Are these standards coming from the state and local, or just local?
They're just local. So what we've gone through is, and what we've gone through is taken out the subjectivity in what standards we have. Some of them are architectural, harmonious. So a lot of these things need to be kind of black and white, and they need to be rigorous so that, and it was, one of the pieces of legislation said, you know, if a bunch of people got together and said, does this make sense, then all these people would agree. So, you know, the term, so it's within your, your standards. We've got things like parking standards, setbacks, lighting levels, noise levels. Those are really objective, building heights. So we can landscape requirements, we got storm drain requirements. So, you know, it's, it's code heavy, but it's trying to take all the gray areas out. And we've got, we think there's plenty of that there to work with. In my opinion, it'd be easier, I mean, it's easier for us to just do the normal process. But this may, this may work in some jurisdictions.
So this, this is all information that developers already have?
Yeah. We, we're kind of harvesting it from our existing codes and then putting it in one place, and we're, we're, staff has been scrubbing through all our codes to get the objective standards together.
So the time clock starts when they walked up to the second floor with complete applications to do a project, correct?
Yep. Yes. And we have 30 days.
And in 30 days, what has to be done, the final map approval?
No, no. We need to tell them if they're complete or incomplete based upon those objective standards. So we need to, within 30 days, we need to give them what the list is and say, this is what you're not doing that's objective.
Okay, so.
And then that start, and then that starts the 30-day clock again, and then.
So there's another clock for each, each step of the process?
Well, depending upon, it's like our system now. When they come in, they, they'll submit, and from, we have 30 days from the submittal date to determine if they're consistent with the objective standards. And then if they are or they aren't, then we tell them. And then if they are, then they're on that accelerated timeframe. If they aren't, then the clock starts again when they submit the new application that they believe is consistent with objective standards.
Okay. But beyond that, the entire process they go through from application to approve final map, are there, is that being streamlined, not just?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
And is CEQA getting this information too, as far as a?
It's, that's one of the, one of the things that we hope to find some guidance on. Pretty much, it doesn't give you much time. It, it, the presumption is that these are ministerial projects. Yeah. That's, that's what this is.
Okay.
If, if you meet all of those preconditions, you know, if you're, if you're an affordable project, more than 10 units, prevailing wages, an urbanized area, there's a series of, there's a ladder of qualifications. But if you meet those, then yes, you're down to what's deemed a ministerial approval situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we need to have objective standards citywide, or can the standards change between neighborhoods or districts or different zoning uses?
They, they probably could change because we, we do have different standards in different zones. So, yeah, they, they would have different, yeah. We have commercial ones, we have residential ones, yeah.
So we would still have some subjectivity based on the neighborhood?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Has the state, has the state decided, or have they defined what they consider affordable housing to be? It's the terms used quite often, but what is it?
Reeking it. Yeah, it's a, it's well defined.
Yeah. Typically, it's housing that's going to be affordable to people no more than 120% of the area median income. That's at the high end. But typically, you know, for lower income, it's going to be 80% of area median income, or, and lower.
And that's already been determined for Chico? Is it something that's going?
It's pretty much in state, state law.
It's a state one?
Yeah, in the Health and Safety Code, yes.
Thank you.
I have a question for Bruce. Sounds like you have a fun project coming up. The question that I have, it has to do with the inconsistency. If inconsistency with objective standard is not identified within 30 to 60 days, the time limit, the project is deemed consistent. So that means you didn't, you didn't produce, so the homeowner, the developer is going to run with it?
Yeah, that's, they normally, they're deemed consistent to objective standards by operation of law. And, yeah, that's what, that's what it provides for. If you miss that deadline, then, then you're under accelerated timelines to produce an approval.
Yes. But if you fail to, to provide the approval, the, the list within the 30 or 60 days, and you're deemed, it's deemed consistent, is there a risk with the development? and you're deemed, it's deemed consistent, is there a risk with the development? Is the public at risk?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't really know the answer to that. Those are, those are really good questions, and I'm sure they'll come up. Maybe our attorney can weigh in.
This wouldn't affect compliance with building codes. So if what you're concerned about is that it would be shoddy construction, it's not going to affect that. What it has to do is, through the planning and approval process, can someone build what they're trying to apply for? If, in your hypothetical, the planning department does not respond within 60 days, then it's deemed consistent, then it moves on to the next step, which would be actually submitting the design plans and getting the building permit. And that's where the public safety aspect would be protected as well.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Tuchinsky, sorry. Evan?
It's okay. I don't mind. He's a, quite a distinguished gentleman. Just a quick question for you. In your presentation, you stated that the secondary, the second dwelling unit, which we're going to be renaming should we pass our resolution tonight, and the council will approve it, to, you know, the accessory dwelling unit. That law with, all the law and code within our city is currently void, correct? Nope?
Well, yeah, I would defer to the attorney on that.
I want to make sure I understood that, because that seemed to be what it said. As of January 1st, the law was void, and that's what I wanted to see, if like now we currently don't have a law, we're just kind of in limbo until we pass something. Is that, did I misunderstand, or was that an oversimplification on the slide, or?
No, you got it right.
Okay.
It's by operational bloods. To the extent it, I mean, our code is valid. To the extent it is, it violates state law, it is invalid. So yes and no.
Okay.
The premise that you have is correct. If we don't have one on the books, or if ours goes too far, then it's invalid and cannot be enforced.
Okay.
And so what's on later in the agenda tonight, we'll clean that up and make it consistent with state law.
Right. Okay. Good. Are there any other things that are, any other types of things that are, that we need to clean up that as of right now are sort of in that same boat? Or are they things that later on we can do, and there isn't that sort of January 1st, 2018, it took effect immediately sort of timeframe?
We did a fairly, the city did a fairly comprehensive code update last year, right around March, I think, something like, it was, city, it was code-wide. It was a massive update. And this year, we're already working, behind this, we've got several areas that we're looking at, like wireless communication facilities, the accessory structures, and non-conforming clauses. So we've got a standing committee where we scrub through the code and identify those things. So there are a number of areas, I don't know if we've got them compiled yet, to what degree we may be out of compliance, I'm not absolutely certain. But the answer is, that's something we're working on, and as soon as we have that package, it's going to be coming to you. And it may come in one big chunk, or depending upon how much there is, we may send it in pieces. But we're working on that too, just to make sure everything else is current, to get at your concern.
Yeah, this happened, again, from, it's happened so fast that it seems like there's a lot that's been chased. So I just wanted to see if there was anything else that was in that same bubble. Thank you.
With the funding, is that, would that operate? And maybe it's still, you don't know?
The, this is one, there is no funding. I mean, this is something that we just had to do. So I think we're, it's a, we're budgeting it to a capital project. But it takes quite a bit of time, and this is an effort with all planning staff and the attorney. I mean, so we all, I mean, this takes hours when we get together and go through this, and all of us do this. And because we've got, so it's hard work, and it takes a lot of time. But it needs to be done, and I mean, it's rewarding. I mean, but it's just one of those kind of costs of operation that we need to do. But there will be funding available.
Yeah. I think, you know, obviously there's not immediate funding for all the work that's being done right now, but down the road, you know, we expect that there's going to be additional things. There's still items that HCD hasn't put out yet. We don't have the format for all the reporting and things like that. And so I think, you know, like I said, unfortunately, we don't have the money now, but down the road we will for additional planning and streamlining and changes.
Matt, do you recall how much the new permitting system would cost? No. So would that, do you foresee that we would need to speed up that expenditure?
Are you talking about the Trackett system?